Consideration. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On your Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
At this point, we are going to honor the twentieth anniversary and celebrate the service of the Helotus Fire Department with some presentations. First will be a proclamation followed by a service award. At this point, I would like to go ahead and call Captain Jack Quip.
Hi, how are you? Mayor, reverse. That's for the department.
That's okay, you're a little nervous. It's okay.
We are very thankful for one of our officers who's been here for the longest, I believe, if anybody acted at this point to, while the department is celebrating its twentieth anniversary, Jack is a paid professional fire department. Jack has been here with us all twenty years and before that, nine years of service in the Helotus area, which is back in volunteer days. And so we're very proud of your long standing commitment to this community. You've been a pleasure to work with, I've watched you in action, seen the way that you interact and how you lead, you lead by example, you set the standard, and you do your department proud and you do the city proud. Proud to call you my friend and very proud to have this opportunity. Thank you, appreciate it. Back to this point of your service, Ken.
Do you want to fish together? Do you want to boil this up?
Sure. I don't want to. You're anywhere you move.
He doesn't want to reach your lips.
I don't want him.
I'll send him to, send him to the.
That's for the department.
Now, the recognition of the entire department, we're, we're gonna make the proclamation too and we will also, after the department, we'll build a year of recognition.
How about person and best?
And best?
And best, one.
Fantastic, alright.
There you go.
Come on.
Matt, hello.
Matt, yeah.
Yeah. Come on.
I'll sit down there like a titan.
You're part of it too, might as well come on.
There's the old volunteer day.
Come on.
Part of the fire department.
Steve, the history. Our proclamation, whereas on January ninth, two thousand and three, the Helotus Fire Department assumed operations on the longstanding Helotus area volunteer fire department. And whereas since two thousand and three, the Helotus Fire Department has employed professional firefighters and paramedics under the direction of former chief Wolden Doherty and current fire chief Scott Morley. And whereas, the Helotus Fire Department continues to serve over nine thousand residents of the city of Helotus and the surrounding area by protecting life, property, and the environment through prevention, education, and preparedness. And whereas, it is fitting that we should honor the dedication and show appreciation to the Helotus Fire Department for serving our community over the past twenty years. Now therefore, I, Rich Whitehead, on behalf of the members of the city council, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Helotus, I do hereby proclaim the year twenty twenty-three as the twentieth anniversary of the Helotus Fire Department, and urge all citizens to join us in recognizing the commitment of the Helotus Fire Department and celebrate the years of service for our community. Thank you all for your service and congratulations on the coed landmark achievement.
We'll all be able to kind of switch if y'all want to be in the picture.
Thank you.
Alright. That's the fun part of being involved with the city, getting to recognize great achievements. At this point, we are going to have the public hearing to give all interested persons the right to appear and be heard on a request by Tim and Wanda Baller for a specific use permit authorizing existence of drive, an existing drive-through facility for HTO. We're gonna open this hearing at seven eleven. Is there anybody signed up to speak? Is there anybody here that cares to speak? You're here ready to hear, okay, I understand. Face the hearing. Alright, in that case, we will close the hearing also at seven eleven. At this point, we will do, citizens will move to citizens to be heard. We have Tom Schoolcraft to come, you will speak, state your name and address, and you have three minutes to share your thoughts with us.
Could you tell them to close the door?
We're gonna close the door here for you, sir.
Tom Schoolcraft, twelve one twenty-seven Tiger Road, Helotus. I'm here tonight to stop a rumor that I heard stated in this chamber on October fourth, two thousand and twenty-two.
The issue of twenty zero six hundred special campaign run back to the Walmart issue is what resulted in a million and a half dollar lawsuit that the citizens of Helotus had to pay because they illegally leased it. Is that that ended up costing us a million and a half dollars because?
That was the mayor speaking to the members of the planning and zoning commission on October fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and to the city council on October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. He told a nice story about big box stores and a lawsuit that cost the city of Helotus and its citizens one point five million dollars. The problem with this story is it's simply not true. Of course, there were many people who opposed Walmart coming to Helotus in two thousand and five, but there were also many people who were excited about the prospect and supported the project. The end result, however, was in fact a lawsuit, Bayless Miller versus City of Helotus, that was filed in the two-hundred-and-eighty-eighth judicial district court in Bear County. The Texas Municipal League, our insurers, retained a local law firm to handle the case, and I, along with our city attorney, worked with them to ultimately reach an agreement with Mr. Miller. In mid-February two thousand and nine, I signed a compromise release and settlement agreement whereby Mr. Miller received seventy-five thousand dollars for attorney's fees, and that amount was paid by the Texas Municipal League. The city's cost was fairly nominal for the time our attorneys spent coordinating with the other local law firm and TML to reach the final agreement. Again, the city of Helotus did not pay one point five million dollars to Bayless Miller. Nobody likes lawsuits, but they will happen from time to time. There's no need to be afraid of getting involved in a lawsuit if you are doing what's right for the city. You just have to deal with them as they come and don't let them get in the way of you doing your job. Our current city attorney, Frank Garza, was involved in the settlement negotiations and should be able to verify the details of this case. It's been said that rumors die when they hit the ears of a wise person. My goal tonight was to give you three minutes of my time and hopefully a little wisdom so you will stop spreading this rumor. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. At this point, we'll move to consent agenda items, five and six. We're looking for a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve consent agenda items, five and six.
Sanders, second by?
Second that.
Alright, with no discussion required, all in favor of approving consent agenda items number five and six, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Let's move this to item number seven. Looking for a motion, a second to discuss and take action on item number seven as written.
Mr. Mayor, I move we discuss and take action on the agenda item number seven.
A second then?
Okay, motion second. Alright, councilman, have some info?
So, looking at what our planning and zoning commission said, they, they supported this a hundred percent. I don't believe they had anybody that came up and spoke against it at P and Z. Obviously, we didn't have anybody to speak about it in a negative way tonight. So, what I find interesting is the drive-through is exactly the same as it was of the previous owner. I, I do think P and Z did talk about, one member talked about safety consideration, and I think the staff put out a, some information saying that that's appropriate, right? And that the, the property owner, the business owner can put whatever safety precautions they need, like taping or whatever, just to kind of see it. But I used to go to the previous establishment and I never had an issue with that. So, I really don't have anything else to say other than I fully support them going forward with this.
I, yes, I, 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 there's no changes. It should pass with flying colors as far, as far as I'm concerned.
Anybody out here?
I have an ad.
I do think that this is something we can look at in the future. I'm not sure exactly why it's required, but something we can perhaps look in, seems more of a hoop to jump through that's unnecessary and perhaps we can take a look in the future. But at this point, for this item, if we're ready with no further discussion, all in favor of approving item number seven as written, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Next, we're looking for a motion, a second to discuss and take action on item number eight concerning the signage for the same organization, HTO. Motion by?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we discuss and take action on item eight is written.
I'm asking second by someone.
So, the question I asked was, there was two things. One, did P and Z weigh in on this because it wasn't with, I didn't see it in the package. So, I asked Selena. So, here's what the response was. I also asked what our ordinance was regarding how many wall signs of businesses allowed to have, which is important to me. A business is allowed to have one wall sign per street or pedestrian way which the, which the building faces, or abuts with a maximum of two wall signs. And then it says, "P and Z recommended approval of a variance on the sign number requirement only, allowing HTO to have three wall signs." The P and Z did not recommend approval on the fourth wall sign, which is the T product mural. I, I always give deference to P and Z overall. I usually do like ninety-eight percent of the time. And I do agree that I do not think that the T product murals should be there. I also though, I do kind of would like to discuss why they need three signs when only one is allowed. So, I'd like to see what my other council members think about that.
Just, just to clarify, it has two sides, but you, so it really is allows two, correct?
It's allowed two sides, but, but the, P and Z said that they're gonna allow three plus this, well, they don't want the other side, so.
No, just to clarify, because you had said three, one would only allow.
Well, looking at the thing, it looked like there were seven signs.
No, 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 I, I totally understand what the point is, but just to clarify, you said when they're only allowed one. They are allowed two.
When, it says, "A business is allowed one wall sign per street or pedestrian way which the building faces," so that's Banderah Road, "or abuts with a maximum of two signs." What, a buts?
So, a building can have a max of two if that specific building abuts another street or a pedestrian way. In this case, that building does abut a pedestrian way.
On which side?
The side, it's actually the north side, but here they have it under the, the west elevation. That side faces, uh, PNC, uh, no, PNC Bank. Or I guess whichever side you want to, yeah, it's up to council what you guys would consider. But if you want to consider the side that faces Christian Brother as the pedestrian way, you can't.
If you can't walk down there, that's where people drive. The sidewalks, I suppose.
As, as, as its technicality is a pedestrian way because?
Christian Brothers will have a good look at their sign then, I guess, right?
And then also keep in mind, council, that at the very rear of that property, you can drive out and then it'll shoot you back to fifteen sixty. So, it's, it's really, I mean, what do you guys, what side do you guys consider a pedestrian way?
There's at least two and an argument for a third.
And that's why the commissioners considered the three signs because they considered all the points of entry and exit.
I'll wait till it's my turn, because I have a definite opinion on it.
Okay, so I'm finished. I just want to hear what everyone else says.
I'll defer to Craig.
I want to hear Craig, too.
So, this actually, so this actually came up at P and Z. Somebody brought up the fact that you have some crape myrtles between the, the PNC Bank and yourself. And so, this is probably only three months of a year, there's no foliage on, on that tree. So, as I walked around, drove around, through all that traffic because of construction, I wanted to get a perspective to see, one, if putting up that sign over your drive-through, which the previous business, business that was there didn't have, if it was really anybody added for your business, right? I mean, why would you pay for a third sign when customers can't even see it? And so, I think, one, the line of sight from Hausmann is next to nothing. I, I really couldn't see any benefit of a sign there personally. Coming in the back way off of fifteen sixty, because I'm familiar with, with what Selena's talking about, I would say a sign on the back of your, your business would be more beneficial in that scenario. I still couldn't see your sign. I didn't see where that'd be any value. I personally believe, and we could, we could decide which one is the better right away for your business to have two signs. A lot of people will drive through where your business will be in Christian Brothers, and then they'll come around, and then I think, I've seen people drive all the way back, and then there's kind of that other area that used to be Banderah Road Cafe, and now I think it's a, it's a drink, a health drink kind of thing. Or people will drive through and they'll end up going up the side road out to fifteen sixty. To me, I think that's the more valuable location if we're gonna discuss numbers. And so, and you're really three properties away from Hausmann, and you have those trees there. And we're not even talking about, that monument actually can be seen pretty well from the corner, right? So, I know the monument's not what we're discussing tonight, but that's another way for you to advertise your business. So, I would make, and last thing, looking at some of the other, because the franchise that you guys are, are establishing here in Helotus, or you're, you're part of that, that business from what I can tell is just exploding over San Antonio. And so, there's a lot of brand new buildings out there. And so, I was thinking, you know, branding, right? Because I know when we were talking about QT, we really didn't want to modify much because they have a branding thing with their business. I saw all kinds of configurations with, with your store. For example, Hubner eight, eight, six, four, eight, Hubner Road, there's only two, nothing over the drive-through. And oh, by the way, that's right next to a, a road. Yeah. There's also the one in O'Connor, same situation, like wide exposure to the road, their drive-through, but the business owners chose. So, I guess my point is that there's, there's not a typical branding to where that particular company kind of needs to have three-sided signs, right? That, and then the impediments that I see between Hausmann and there, I, I actually don't see, the only benefit I would see, because I think it's a beautiful sign, by the way, is that you have symmetry. That, that's the benefit, right? And, and the sign is really beautiful sign, and, and I would love to say three, but I, I can make the argument that two would probably benefit you. And then the, the other point is, are those lighted signs?
Internally lit, yes, internally lit.
So, I, I, I don't know how much light that's gonna give off, but let's just say that sign can't really be seen by potential customers, but yet it's just more light in our night skies. And we get a lot of feedback, a lot of pushback from community residents about, they want us to do is whatever we can on council to minimize excess lighting when there's really no need or purpose for it. So, that's my perspective, some of my thoughts.
Well, I think one theme that kind of came up in P and Z with one of the commissioners is setting a precedence, and that's why they were against the mural sign. They didn't want to set a precedence for that. Another commissioner said that they could accept the three signs because their uniformity, there's a hill country feel to the signs. They're very, they're very Helotus, right? I think our applicant said it's H for Helotus in the P and Z meeting. So, I guess, you know, this is where it comes to why do we have variances? And do, if we, I guess I would welcome comments from other council members as if we do approve the third sign, not the mural. I, I'm not supportive of the mural like P and Z recommended, but if we pull it, approve the third sign, what concern is that for the second and third order effects in the future?
Sir, my turn? So, yeah, in this instance, I'd, I'd compare with P and Z. I would not be in support of the mural on the side. The, and I, I came here with the same intentions, it sounds like, to see what everybody else thought about approving the three signs here because they do look aesthetically pleasing and, and, you know, with the facade of the building. It goes with, you know, what I think our intent is with trying to keep that hill country feel, but unfortunately, you do have that precedent that we're talking about. And so, I would say, since P and Z already put it out there, and I think I'm the third one now, waiting for other people to comment on it and see what everybody said, your fourth one, I'm gonna side with P and Z and I would say, you know, let them have those three sides, or those three signs, and not have the mural.
Yeah, I'm also not in favor of that mural, but, and I don't see, I mean, by the pictures here, I'm, I'm looking at these pictures and I'm looking, and I'm looking, and I'm looking, and I did what Mr. Sanders did and drove around there. Like, you can't see the ones on the side. You have to be on the side of the building, look it up, and the, the amount of traffic goes through. You can have three signs, as far as I can see. I just think it's probably money spent better elsewhere, but it's your money and your thing. But I don't really have a problem with the signs on the side.
Yes, sir.
So, I have another, another comment, or you can go.
No, yeah, I just wanted to say, I, I see, and, and I have the same, I was thinking the same thing, however, but I, I do agree with Craig that that third sign, again, signs, these kind of are expensive, they're not cheap. And so, if, and I think the reason this is difficult, because they are, the, the brickwork and the sign itself, the text is, it looks, it's a very nice sign. Usually, I don't have this kind of difficulty because of the garishness of some signs I've seen. There's no question that we're not gonna have that many, you know, but this time it's a little different because the signs look very classy, very nice. But I also think it's gonna set a precedent to allow three signs. And especially, and I don't think it's necessary, I don't think the one facing that side is necessary. I think I would allow the two and not the, the mural thing. That's, that's my opinion. You can still put the brickwork up there and no one's gonna see that, that side anyway. Save you a little bit of money and then, so anyway, that's my, my opinion.
Let me make a comment here, then I'll turn it back over to you, Craig, if you don't mind. I want to make sure that, the issue of how much it costs is of no concern of ours. Well, you know, it's, it's a valid point for their consideration, but we have to take a look at and, and focus on, is it reasonable, is it not? Part of, one of the things that may be a little bit outside of the box thinking, we actually have grants for artwork, looking to put up things that look good, you know. We've granted variances for, with inclusion of a lot of brickwork to help create a Texas hill country deal. The sign is really a Texas, when you take a look at the ways to be able to measure the square footages of signage, if you took the, one of the ways would actually reduce the calculations of that to the actual amount of the sign as opposed to the brick that's showing through it. So, there are different ways to look at it as far as how much signage they are actually utilizing. Now, standards and practice, we've kind of practiced the whole square envelope, but we've also recognized in previous meetings the shortcomings of that methodology. So, in that, as far as total amount of signage, having the three being that it's almost symmetrical and helps add to the symmetry as a forward, as opposed to maybe perhaps an awkward look, maybe something for consideration. Separating that from the mural, the mural sign being a bright is a little bit more of, seems to fall on a little bit of a billboard. That's a terrible comparison, but, but at the same time, more of like the side of seven eleven, it may be a little bit, you know, this day specials or, or whatever, which is, you know, in theory, nothing wrong. But I think by making that distinction, I think it seems to be a lot of, everybody seems to be on the same page on the, on the.
On the mural.
Fourth card, uh, fourth one's all.
The mural.
The mural, thank you, thank you.
The wall mural?
The wall mural, but.
No bueno.
So, I mean, I struggle with this because I really do like all three signs, I really do. But I also have to look at all the other businesses that are in the city of Helotus. It's this precedent, precedent setting, right? We're allowed to do variances, but I, I really struggle. And, and council mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, outside of Finks, and they're in an overlay district, outside of Finks, I, I, I can't find another building that has three signs on it. And maybe I'm wrong, but I looked hard. And maybe you guys, that's precedent setting. So, so Kentucky Fried Chicken could come back here tomorrow and say, you know what, now I want signs on both sides of, of my business. And then pretty soon, the whole signage, the purpose behind what I thought this ordinance was after was, yes, signs are important for businesses. We want you to do well in the city, but we also want, when you come down Banderah Highway and it's getting harder and harder. But we also want, when you come down Bandera Highway and it's getting harder and harder. To get this feeling that we do look different, right? But we still don't, we don't want to handicap our businesses, but by no sake, I am not advocating harming any of our businesses. But I'm just trying to balance in my mind what's good for you and your business to be successful. And what makes Helotus look a little different and it's getting harder now with the big highway that's being built down through the center of the city. More lights, especially if they're not necessary. Those are all the things that I'm thinking about and I do think this is precedent setting, so if. If council votes to approve the three signs and not the billboard. And, and I could live with that, that's the way we go, we all have to accept the fact that this makes a lot difficult. When another business comes here and wants to have three signs that are set up like you guys are where you're not. You don't have to be part of those, those multi-business monuments, right? That you're really kind of treated as a standalone business. And again, I like to emphasize you have a monument up front. That is really helpful in catching those eyes on Hausmann, the way you have it situated. So that's my last slide.
Frank, we can vote on these individually by variance?
You can if you so wish to. You don't have to, you can vote for them as a group or you can break them up individually.
Mr. Mayor, I think somebody would like to come to the podium and talk.
Sure, please, come forward, please, and state, state your name and who you're with.
My name is Kathy Song, I'm with Titan Sign Company and I'm working with, with them to do the signage. And so you mentioned the Hedner location and the other location in O'Connor, we actually put up the signs over there, it's kind of an older, like. I think Hedner was, we put those up maybe about two and a half, two years ago. HTO is a, like a new, you know, it's a new franchise, so I think it's about, I think they, two thousand eighteen is when they started franchising. It is growing really fast, it's new to Helotus. And if you look at the three signage on there and you mentioned the creativity of it, if you look at it and you look at the. The structure of the, of the location, you see the, they're spending extra money to build a wooden panel. On top of it. So if you look right here on this side, it has the background of the wooden panel as well as the other three locations. So without the additional sign that they're going to have up there, it's just not going to, I guess, match very well. And so this is kind of, you know, every different location has different types of, you know, signage. So I know that you went to the San Antonio locations, but if you go to all of the other franchises, that there's usually three signage at the location. With the, with the wall murals.
I guess I just randomly, I just picked two.
Oh, yes.
I was trying to get, to look, I just did it on Google thing and so I went and looked at the one at Alamo Parkway. And it's so new that you, you go down and you look at, you partially see it at one, one view and you go a little bit further down the road and it's still not been built. So I couldn't tell, but those two I just were two I randomly picked and they didn't have three, and my point I was just trying to make was branding. But this is a standard look at all those locations, that's what, that was my only point I was making. Because when we had another business that, that came here, that are developing here. That was one of their, that was one of their points was, hey, this is known branding. And so I, I didn't see that, that was a point I thought council needed here.
Yes, so it is part of their brand, so if you look at this one, they specifically built the wooden panels in the background to. To include the signage onto that location, so if you look at it with one of them that's missing the signage, it just looks very bare. So that is part of their brand.
The other thing I would note, and I wasn't on council when they designed and worked with that KFC. That had such a, I think in my opinion, a really good outcome, they do have branding and painting on the sides of that KFC. They're not signs, but it's branding. There's black lettering painted on the sign, so.
I get it, but there's not a business sign on all three sides.
Right, there's not a KFC sign, but they do have branding on the right and left sides of that building.
Yeah, my, my whole point about branding was a building is, a business is built a certain way and it needs to look like that at every location or people may not recognize it. That was my point.
So depending on the way the building is shaped, but most of the locations actually have three signs and has.
I really do like the look, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you. And, and then also, I know that the wall murals, you guys were all against the wall murals. But if you look at the Golden Chicken currently, they actually have four wall murals on their current, current building.
On what business?
The, the one that they're, this, this one, previous, previous location.
Previously had signs there?
It's not actual signage, but it's just pictures for, for, and it looks just like this one, but it's two on this side and two on the other side.
I think it was art.
I think those are renegade signs.
Oh, I see.
Just every once in a while, we have somebody that does something without a permit or without a permission and sometimes we have to, you know. We do the best we can to police the area, if you will, with our code compliance and. So thank you for bringing that attention. Tennis no longer there, we move forward the best we can. But you'll bring up an excellent point, one of the, one of the major considerations we have to take a look at is, is setting precedents. And one of the major things that we do have, our sign ordinance is very strict, as you are well aware of. Is it too strict? That's a, that's a question for a different agenda item. But it has been serving the community for a good many, many years. We've, have we had variances? Certainly, have they been different type of circumstances? Certainly. You know, the wood looks, looks great and still maintains that if you had no signs on either side, just the front, you know. I understand what you're saying, but one of the things we really kind of have to take to heart is taking a look at. Ordinance versus design, you know, some things look better this way, but it just requires a seven hundred foot sign because. No, I can't. And so at this point, do we have any other specific questions for the designer?
So certainly I'm a hard no on the murals because Christian Brothers, I take my Jeep there and I see that and it would just look way too commercial, in my opinion. I think it'll get the traffic anyway from that waiting room there, so for sure, for sure, I'm hard on that. In terms of the three signs and setting a precedent, I think with the facade of the building and the signs as they are. And the amount of effort they put into this design that if we're going to set a precedent, it should be bring us more.
This?
Yes, and so I'm still all for your three signs and applaud your, your effort in that graphic design outcome.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other comments or questions? Okay, with no further discussion. Let's break this down by variance item, can you pull up the variances there, Selena? We have two or is it three?
It's three.
It's three, right? So the first ordinance variance is for the number of signs?
It's the size and the number would go together, so if you want to do a motion for the wall signs itself and decide whether you want. Two, three, and then you can do a separate motion for the T product mural by itself.
Okay, so the maker of our motion would be Councilwoman Rassie, if you want to.
Do the wall signage first?
Sub motion for number of signs. It would have to be seconded and if it's not seconded, then we'd get a different motion.
I just have one question before I make my motion. The truth is I'm leaning just to the two signs and that third, the, 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 the drive through is, is the area where we wouldn't have the sign. It would still look the same as far as the brick and the, and the wood and everything, I mean, the only thing that would be missing would be the, the sign part, right?
Yes, and I, I just want to mention, we do actually a lot of the HTO locations, probably ninety-five percent. And, and with all of the wooden, with all of the different cities, they actually have the signage where, because it's built. It's, you know, and we've gone through a lot of, you know, few variances and they've approved it for, for it. Because it matches the aesthetics and what their brand is trying to communicate.
I, I understand that, this is Helotus and, you know. Okay, I'm going to make the motion, so. I'm going to go ahead and, and just. I'm not sure what to do as far as a motion, what, what am I supposed to do?
If you, I would suggest in the motion made that you move for X number of signs. To authorize X number of signs concerning the first variance request.
I, okay, I move that we authorize the two signs, one on the front and one on the south side.
Oh, we would need a.
A second.
Second that, okay. Now, a vote of yes would be for the two, a vote for no would be for something other than two and then we can. Address the outcome after we've had that, so on the motion for approving a maximum of two signs. According to the first variance, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Well, that's all right, for the record on there, so it is the first variance is approved, well, is.
Well, actually, it wasn't because they're, they're allowed a max of two.
Right, so there we go, so we're down to two on that, the next variance request was for.
The mural, the. The product, the T product mural. And, and my, my motion is to deny the. T product mural.
Okay, and so as you have the option to be able to second that, okay. The motion is to deny, so therefore a yes vote is to deny, a no vote is to approve. Make sure we don't get our double negatives wrong here, so all in favor of denying the mural sign, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, so. Motion is approved to deny the mural sign. Grammar and punctuation matters.
Can I, can I ask a question regarding the wall mural? In the ordinance, there is actually a creative sign that's allowable, is it possible for, for us to create something for them where they can actually put it up there? Where it gets passed or is that something that we got to talk to the city?
Actually in the Old Town section of that, is where that falls and rests, so that's outside of the Old Town area. So it's, that's a, that's a separate area, but creative on that, just so you know, if you work on other projects, special materials. Something that's hill country. In that range, old wood mill that. Picking things out of the air to give an example to answer your question.
Okay, okay, that's good, thank, thank you.
At this point, we'll move on to item number nine, looking for a motion to second to discuss and take action on item number nine as written.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we discuss and take action on agenda item number nine.
From my Sanders, second by, hold on a second, Richard.
Councilman. So I believe this was, P and Z's recommendation was unanimous to support. I did have some questions for staff that I didn't hear addressed at P and Z. So the lighting. The examples that are in the, the handout. There's no examples of the lighting, they do say it'll be similar to what was previous. My question is, is that dark, I'm not trying to nitpick, but we. And it may be because it's Old Town, so maybe they don't have to hear, is it going to be what, what they call the dark sky compliant lights? Or do they not need that because they're going to match up to what's currently over the other side? That's my first question. Second question is, the way it's displayed in the handout. Is, is, is the new sign going to be all the way over to the gutter? Or is it actually, I just, proportionality looks weird in the handout. And I'm like, if it's really going to be all the way to the gutter, that, that would be horrible. And I'm hoping it's just that the representation, it's just hard to mash that on the graphics, that's all, because it's Old Town. And that's a primary, that's one of the primary ways in and out of Old Town, so. Those, those were my, my two questions, I didn't know if you were Michael.
We have a dimension on that, on that sign, I think that's.
It's thirty-two square feet and it's twenty-four by a hundred and ninety-two, is that inches?
Yes.
Yes, inches.
How, that looks huge on there anyway.
Hundred ninety-two divided by twelve, one, seven, seventy-two, six, sixteen by two, so sixteen feet by two. So we need to think more in terms of actual. Length, not necessarily how, because that's obviously cut and pasted, you know, cut from there.
And that's what I thought too.
Yeah, word paint and then, you know, paste it on a picture, so I don't think that that is actually to scale. But you have to think sixteen feet, those windows are three foot wide windows underneath it, so there's six feet, you got a door. That's three feet, that's nine plus two feet in between, ten, eleven, twelve. So you got from the, the outset over to the right is twelve feet, so you got four more feet, so I think that sign. That representation overstates the size of the sign.
I hope it does.
Four feet.
I, I, I think that we need to make it clear that we can't have that going, oh, that's, it just doesn't look right. I mean, just.
Can you go back to the?
What is six, do you have a tape measure?
There's, and maybe it was in the P and Z handout.
Right there, right there.
It was like, where, see where the brown building is ends and then it's yellow? That's thirty-four feet from the new part of the building all the way to the very edge to the right.
That's thirty-four, so the middle was seventeen and if we're looking at sixteen feet, really what you got is not from where the sign is. But from where that. Pitch roof comes down to the right hand side where the tree kind of meets that pitch of the, that from there over. Which would match in fact what is on the other building.
And Mr. Villanueva, the applicant, when he came to P and Z, they asked him, is this going to match the other sign? And he said yes, because there were concern at P and Z that again, in the pictures, the Owens Law Firm has a border. This one does not, P and Z wanted it to match. The border had fallen down on Owens Law Firm, I drove by the other day, it is, there's no border on Owens Law Firm, neither of them will have a border. So, I, I mean, I don't mean to be critical of the applicant, but this. Probably would have been helpful to submit a current picture of Owens Law Firm as well, so. I guess we don't want to assume. Because, but he, the applicant did say they are going to match, so.
Do you have dimensions of the building?
Fifteen plus thirty-four plus thirty-four.
So from the, this is a side, this is a side that we're looking at where the sign would be, right?
That's the drawing, that will give you the dimensions.
Okay, so from the very, as we're looking at that plan, from the very right hand side. To the very start of the very first peak from the right hand side as we're facing it, do we have a dimension on there?
The entire front facade is eighty-three linear feet.
No, no, no.
What, what do you mean?
From the far right side, working over until the very first start of the peak, no.
Oh, no, it's not broken down like that, it's broken down by, by office.
You could almost, if that's thirty-four feet, what's that seventeen, the center point would, at that peak of, onto the right would be seventeen feet.
Yeah, seventeen is going to be right about there, which puts there, sixteen is there, so it's already on to that peak.
So that's, that's horrible, I don't like that.
I'm sorry, and, and the other thing too. If, if it's true that this, and I'm sure it is, that there's no, he said it was going to look like the Owens Law Firm sign, which is. Which it fits right on there and it has this little frame, but it doesn't have a frame on it. So which one is he going to do, the one without the frame or the one with the frame, the one that he showed us on this picture or not?
He said it's going to be without a frame.
Without the frame?
Yeah, and so it would have been helpful to have a picture of it.
So what does it look like, what does it look like, because I didn't have a chance to go by there.
It, it, it looks just like that picture, only there's no frame on it.
So, but does it look odd without the frame?
I don't think so.
Okay.
And P and Z didn't have an issue with it not having a frame, they just didn't want one with a frame and one without. And when you submit it with a frame, it's confusing to the.
Exactly, okay. Well, my, 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 is there a way we can just say that we'll approve it as long as it does, if, if it fits within. I didn't even know, see, I don't know architectural terms, so for this roof line, you know, if it fits within this.
What would look perfect, that drawing, that schematic drawing, and then they have the right proportion of the current sign and then the new sign. Presented on that drawing, then you would actually have a full, a full perspective, a proportionality of how it will look.
Well, Ken. We're just all kind of talking willy nilly, but I think, I think we should postpone this until he gives us something that we can actually look at and approve. We can't just, you know, just say, okay, yeah, well. you know, just say, okay, yeah, well, just, just kind of, we don't like what it looks like, but you said it's gonna look a different way, so, we've never done that before. You know, they, they show us what it's gonna look like, and if, if it's, you know, that's it. But, but the way it looks here is not what I would want to approve. And I don't want, so that's why I'm saying, I, I mean, I guess we could just say, no, we don't want to approve this because of the depiction.
Because it, there's no symmetry.
There's no symmetry in the picture.
And we don't have the applicant here to go, he did go on record at P N Z saying they would look the same, well, again, you're right, that's there's a lot of gray area there.
Mm-hmm.
Same being.
It doesn't look the same, it's going all the way to the peak of the other roof.
The.
Most applicants, we would deny this.
The, the, the peak, if you look in the original building, you, you also have to realize that when you have, when you have a sign, and you got a peak coming down, and the other one comes in here, but the picture's depicted here, you got a slope coming down there, and it just won't work, construction-wise, won't work as it's depicted in the, in the, right there. You got a, you got a roof line that comes down there, so obviously, that cut and paste of the picture overlay on the, on the building can't be accurate, because you've got a, you got a roof line that cuts off the bottom corner of that sign.
Well, you wouldn't even be able to mount that.
That's what I'm saying, you, you wouldn't even be able to mount it, at least, so, really, the question is, uh, had he shrunk the computer image and, and put it as a small little sign on there, would be a better depiction, this might just be a bad submission, if you will, but he's got the dimensions of the sign.
And again, I, I'm not sure, from, from the bottom of that roof line, the peak, all the way, you know, from, from there to the end, we're, we're still not sure how long that is, and he said this, so this sign's gonna be sixteen feet long?
What if we?
Maybe somebody submitted sixteen.
Say we approve a fourteen.
If, if. Uh, 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 we don't, and we don't know from the, from the things, from, from that point, from where that little tree is to the end, what's, what is the, the measure, the measurements, there's some measurements here, aren't there? Um, let's look.
It's, it's a little hard to decipher from the schematics that we, uh, submitted, but what we know definitively is from where it turns red on, on the picture, where it turns red to the red-yellow line, all the way to the far right-hand side of the picture is thirty-four feet. And so when you look at that.
The red line?
Look on, on the, on the picture, can you roll the photograph?
This one?
Yeah, so where the building goes from red to yellow.
The, the sixteen to the, to the new.
This to this is thirty-four?
So sixteen is less than half of that, and when you, when you divide the yellow building in half, it's about exactly where the other sign would be.
Right.
Is this, I mean,
Which.
I understand, okay, I, I, I get what you're trying to say, you, you want us to approve this based on that.
I'm not saying I want here to prove it, I'm trying to ascertain what he's, what he.
But I don't think that, that's our job. When an applicant puts something in, they're supposed to show us exactly what it's gonna look like. And, and that's, and if this is exactly what it's gonna look like, I can't vote for that.
Now, P N Z did ask the applicant to come up, and on record, he said the signs are going to match, and then they were okay with it.
So that it won't look like it's submitted, but it's actually gonna look like it's built.
And he can have the signs look exactly alike, design-wise, but that doesn't mean that he, he can, he can put it on that ledge just like that, like you're saying, he, maybe he won't, he probably won't, because it'll be the right size. But he could still, he could come back and put it just like that, hanging on, and, and we'd have, and, and we've, and we've approved it, because, well, he says, I, I gave that to you, that's why I told you what it was gonna look like, his sign's a lot bigger than the other sign, because his name's a lot bigger, obviously, right?
Yeah, but you could bump down the point size and abbreviate associates and.
Yeah, but why didn't he, why, why didn't they, they send an appropriate?
I, I agree, I agree.
So we have, we have a couple of options, one, we can approve as submitted. Two, we can approve with a stated size length. And then if he doesn't like it, he could come back and apply for a different, with a better application, or three, we can postpone pending, uh, further documentation to be able to bring clarification. Uh, and those really are kind of our, our three choices at this point. Um, it seems like there's some confusion, I don't, I don't see that there's anybody that really says, uh, they don't want him to have a sign, or that it's an inappropriate sign, it's just a question of the sign, uh, of the size, and how that's gonna fit there. So if what you're looking for is clarification, to make sure that we don't have some sort of awkward thing that's actually, has to be put up higher on the top of the building because he built the sixteen-foot, and that requires that, then that would be my suggestion that you make a motion to, to table it until we can get some further clarification from.
Postpone, not table, postpone.
Postpone. Uh, until we can get some further clarification, perhaps a better picture, so that they.
And in dimensions of the, of the, uh, the tree, I mean, the, the roof line area where it's gonna be.
So, so I really think going back to that schematic, that shows the lengths, right, and, and the new addition, the addition to the old building, the roof line, and then accurate depiction of what the old sign will look like, and what the new sign will look like, and as mounted on the roof. That should, that should be easy to do.
Mm-hmm.
I would think, and that should be enough for us to make an educated.
And what the new sound, and what, what the old sign looks like now without the frame.
Right, but, but he did, they did confirm that they weren't gonna put, they were gonna, they're gonna take the frame off the old one, or it's.
It's already.
It already is off the old one.
It fell off.
Yeah, it's not on there.
But, but again, we, that's not showing on this submission.
But, but I don't think they're gonna go back and put a frame on the old one.
No, no, they don't need to put a frame on it.
Are you just saying in the final depiction?
Go back and take a picture of what it looks like now, and then, you know, compared to what it's gonna, yeah.
Okay, so, uh.
So I think I got the motion right.
You do have the motion, so it's up to you if you want to, uh, call for a vote, or if you want to, uh, so make a motion to move.
I'm, I'm gonna, yeah, I, I'm gonna make a motion, well.
Make a motion to withdraw your original motion and then make a new motion.
Yeah, so I make a motion, withdraw my, my original motion, and I'd like to make a new motion, um, to postpone a, a vote on this agenda item until we have more clarifying information on the location of the signs of the old one and the new one as positioned on this building.
Okay, so, I made a motion, first thing we need to take care of is that, Merchant wants a second.
Yes, I'll second that.
Well, first thing we have to dispense with is, uh, approving the removal of his motion, all in favor of approving the removal of his initial motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, initial motion has been removed. Next, we have your motion to postpone, uh, this item until we get further clarification on the size of the uh, existing building and roof lines, and the size of the existing sign, and its actual accurate, accurate depiction of the new sign. Looking for a second to that motion.
I'll second that.
Merchant, second as just stated. Do we need any discussion on actually postponing? Anybody? No, without any further discussion, all in favor of approving the motion to postpone this item, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries to postpone. Uh, let's give some direction to staff, Michael, if you can go ahead and reach out and, uh, confer what was discussed, and, and get a redesigned submittal in there, and make sure we get this the very next meeting, so we can get this dealt with. At this point, uh, we have a discussion item, uh, does not require a motion, no action is to be taken, just some discussion, uh, on the bulk and brush collection and saltway services provided by Republic Service to the City of Helotis. As we all know, Republic built, uh, bought out C six, uh, we knew there was going to be, uh, a little bit of transitional issues to deal with, uh, and, uh, it did not disappoint, uh, there have been some transitional issues, uh. One of the things that we've been dealing with was that the contract with C six brought in a new paradigm that we needed to, that we're gonna have bulk or brush pickup, something was happening every month. But it required calling in, and, uh, that is a new dynamic that, uh, people had, uh, mostly taken on, but, uh, it's been a little bit slow uptake on some of our population. Republic bought out, and, uh, there was some confusion in that. Republic did a huge show of good faith by going ahead and picking up anybody's stuff that had out, even if they had called, if they had not called. But I'm not sure if that did them any favors, because it almost has created, well, they pick it up, we just put it out. And of course, uh, that is not the terms of the contract, and of course, is extra amounts of brush and, and, and pickup that they weren't planning on, because they plan on size of trucks and number of trucks, based upon how many people call in. So, uh, one of the things, uh, that has been talked about behind scenes, which kind of bring this out for discussion, is that they want us to broadcast that they have a cutoff date, if you don't call, it won't be picked up after April first? I believe April first was the, the cutoff of their grace period, or they're just gonna pick up stuff that they, that they run across.
But wait a minute, are they still gonna do honor the, every few months, you know, like the way?
Every other month, no, no, that would be, so.
We're, we're gonna still stay on the same schedule of every other month, bulk and like that.
So bulk is the, I, I remember this, bulk are odd products, and they're on the odd months, so January was bulk pickup. So next month is brush. You call, they'll pick up the brush. If you don't call, they're not gonna pick up the brush.
So, call, and you said, they said call two weeks before?
No, you can call any week, so if you're, if you're a week, it's gonna be on Thursdays, every Thursday. So if your week is the third week of Thursday, you can call anytime up to the end of the second week, so the week before, you put it out.
Okay, yes, yes.
So, so in Iron Horse, our bulk pickup was yesterday, Thursday, the second Thursday. Okay, today, because they picked mine up, sorry, I'm. So they picked my stuff, I thought the date was Friday, but we don't meet, have council meetings on Friday. Anyway, so I called last week, and, and it was so smooth, I had no problems, they, they said, okay, gotcha. I put my stuff out, they just tell you, put it out the night before, no later than seven in the morning. So I did that, went to work, came home, it was, they had picked it up.
So they told, they, what did they tell you when to put it out?
Seven, no, no later than seven o'clock in the morning, the day of pickup.
You know, I, I, I called on Monday for bulk. It was totally easy, they weren't, but I was told, get it out as soon as possible, because you never know when they're gonna come.
Well, we know that they're gonna come on Thursdays of every week, at this, at this point, it's every, every week.
In your neighborhood, in my neighborhood, it's first, the first week of the month, and it's on Wednesday.
So, brush has been Wednesday, bulk has been Thursdays, it's moving to everything on Thursdays, is what they're moving to, to provide.
Well, I guess my question is, we still have to call.
You have to call.
And, and you can call up to, how, how, the day before, you said?
Well, you, the, the idea was by Friday of the week before.
That's what I thought, yeah, you give them some time.
It's next week, so call by Friday of this week for, to schedule. Now, in all reality, if you call, you called on Monday for three days later.
Last week, she called Monday.
Okay, and so, uh, you follow the rules, they're kind of giving some grace period, and what they have been doing is, you called, you called, you did not call. But they're driving down the street to get their stuff, and they see your stuff, so they've been picking it up anyways. So they have been doing above and beyond, doing what they did not contract to do as a method of goodwill. The problem is now, our good customer here who's, oh, I just put it out and picks it up, well, they're no longer gonna do that after April one, you're gonna have to call, and that's what they're saying. So, uh, like I said, their goodwill effort of picking things up when people scheduled, didn't schedule, might have turned around to bite them in the butt, because now it's, it's created a a little bit of a pattern. So, we, we're on the city side, just to let you know, on this discussion wise, on the city side, we're gonna be putting out continued communications on all our social media, as well as message to the mayor, remember, you must call, if you don't call, it's not gonna be picked up, we'll broadcast this repeatedly. What I really want to focus on is maybe some discussions on, for example, some problems that we've been seeing. Bulk pickup for us is free, when, when they pick it up on our scheduled week. However, if you have bulk pickup, yours is the first week, you're here the third week, and you're just, I don't know, you cut down a tree and you need it out, or you just got new appliances, and you don't want those appliances sitting in your garage for the next two weeks, you want them to call and pick it up, they will come and make a special trip. But that, they charge for it because you're calling for additional services. And one of the problems we're seeing is that people are calling to schedule their bulk pickup, and they're getting a bill for forty-six bucks for a special pickup when it's actually their week. And so that's been a problem on the customer service side, because, uh, I have one individual, uh, won't state his name, he called, man, I got this big bill, and when all said and done, they cleared the bill because they realized what it was. So we are having some customer service issues, and these are the things we need to kind of discuss, any other type of customer service issues or confusion on Republic's part, because there's enough of it that, um, we need their customer service to understand how our contract works, right?
Yeah, you're right, and you know what, it's probably because Republic is such a big organization, and they have so many customers in other cities than, than ours, perhaps we should tell our residents, when they call to make the appointment, to specify that they are part of, of the program in Helotis, and this is part of our, uh, package deal that we, they, you know, it's, it's included in the bill.
One of the, uh, in my meeting with Republic originally on, uh, and, of course, having a bile right after you sign a contract is not an easy thing, and one of the things we said is that we're gonna hold you accountable for these things. One of the things they brought to the table, which I was encouraged and hoping, is that they have, because they're a large company, they have a much more substantiated customer service center, and that they actually have each contracts, uh, he described it as like, uh, tabs, so they flipped to the city and the contract flipped it over, and they got all the specifics of the tab, or probably electronically click on the tab, rather, uh, it, it sounded really well. Additionally, they were hiring almost every single employee from C six and retaining them, including their customer services, so they would have knowledge of it. However, it's a new contract, it's not like the old C six employees now employed with Republic had a long, extensive history with this contract, because that dynamic is new as of July. This does appear something we need to address to them, the current contract does offer this, if we identify a problem, we do have to give them thirty days to be able to correct. If they don't correct, or if it continues to be a problem, this is where it becomes up to us to determine what is satisfactory results or not satisfactory results, or if it happens too often, where we can, at that point, go out for bid, if you will, or take a look at other options. Uh, I think clearly we want to give them benefit of the doubt, you know, we don't want to take on those type of challenges at all, they appear to be responsive, and when the, a problem is identified, from what I can see, everybody's bill that has caught that and flagged it, of course, it would be nice if we didn't have to comb through bills and, and make sure that build correctly. I got my bill, it was correct, but I hadn't called for service, I don't haven't had that bulk or brush experience yet. Um, but I think it's the customer service, is there any other issues that, so that we can be aware of, uh, when we call them and, and discuss these things?
I, I, my couple are all anecdotal. With some people that are, their, their phone system, and I was literally there when a senior citizen was trying to actually call to prove to me that their bill was, they got overbilled. And for fifteen minutes, he was trying, he was dialing the right number, and he was reading back the numbers, if it was a, a number like one million, one billion, two hundred, it was actually the phone number. So something was, was amiss, because when he called, it gave him two options, and regardless of which option, because he called multiple times. And, uh, so, again, that could be anecdotal, um, but seemed like they're, they're, yeah. Whatever system they used to, to manage their calls that come into the help desk or customer service was on the fritz at that particular time, so, but again, that's a one-off.
I, I've heard that, but I've, I've seen that come up on social media, too.
Yeah. Well, I ask people, I, I ask people, send me your inputs, and I'll try to gather them up and, and share them, so, anyways.
Okay. Anybody other experiences? Okay. All right, that's all I really have, there's no action on that. At this point, we're gonna uh, move to closed session, closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one point zero-seven-one, consultations with city attorney. Uh, and in addition to the matters listed below, any matter scheduled for open session can be discussed in closed session as appropriated and authorized by law. Today, we'll be speaking about five-five-one point zero-seven-one, consultations with city attorney with respect to discussion of all legal options, including litigation on development matters related to this ranch. Time right now is eight-twelve, we will return.
We are back in session at 8:57 with no other business to discuss. We are now adjourned at 8:57.